And pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. Welcome to the City Infrastructure Committee meeting of 25th of January 2021. I declare this meeting open at 10:30am. I'd like to advise meeting attendees that this meeting is being webcasted and audio recorded. We do have a leave of absence today, councillor Bradley is absent. Can I have a mover that councillor power will move that councillor Bradley's absence be recorded? Do I have a second please councillor Stemp? All those in favour, please raise your hands. That is carried unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on, we've got item 4.1 is a report into public lighting preferred LED luminaire for Logan City councillor. I'll now refer to item 4.1. Can the Road and Infrastructure Planning Manager, Mr Kamal Renawira, please enter the discussions? And before we open the discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? There being none. Just up to the front, Mr Renawira, thank you. Good morning.
Morning everyone.
We're waiting with bated breath for your report, you may proceed whenever you're ready.
The report is about public lighting or streetlights, in other words. Council received a letter from NRJX. Before the letter, there had been some discussions with the officers about the rollout of LEDs to phase out mercury vapour lights. So the letter was received and the letters suggest that they can have two, we can have two options in terms of, I think the luminaire. So if one is 3000k which is warmer light, the other one is 4000k cooler light. When you say cooler light, it still has some kind of a yellow tinge. The 3000k warmer light has a higher yellow tinge. So we did some research in that respect and we spoke to other councils. And also we made a demonstration to our chair with the two lights in a dark room showing the effects. And the effects are such that 4000k light represents daylight more than the 3000k light. So the report is suggesting that we should go with that, that's the endorsement that we are seeking. There are some details in the report. The other details are about the conversion of LEDs, the number of lights, the tariffs and that sort of stuff. I'll give you a bit of a background to that. We have 33,000 streetlights in Logan and most of them are in NRJX ownership. So if you go to the table that is in the report, has the, has given, give the breakdown of all the tariffs. So if a streetlight is installed by NRJX and maintained by NRJX, the tariff number one applies, that's NPL one tariff, right? And that's totally owned by NRJX, in other words. If a streetlight is constructed or created by Logan or developer and hand over to NRJX and donate to NRJX and they maintain that, the tariff two applies. And the third tariff is NPL three, which is streetlights are constructed or created and maintained by council. So we only pay the consumption for those lights. So if you look at the table, you see that five percent of the, less than five percent we own, the others are all owned by NRJX. So the other thing is rollout of LEDs. So we've been talking to NRJX for a long time. The LED technology has occurred about over 10 years ago. Then it developed and now it is, it is well-accepted straight lighting opportunity for everyone. So NRJX is now considering LEDs. So that's the reason for coming back to us. And the other thing is mercury vapour lights are no longer manufactured because of the mercury. So we need to phase it out. So the, I'm happy to get any questions from here onwards, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Renawira. I'll now open the floor to councillors for discussion, councillor Karansky.
Thank you Kamal, a couple of quick ones. So in Yarra-Bilba, we have LED lighting throughout entirely. Is that that 4000k option or 3000k option that we currently have in Yarra-Bilba?
I think the Yarra-Bilba is 4000k option, I'll confirm that, but I'm pretty sure that that's the case.
That's fine, and we're looking at rolling this out on a need basis as, as the need comes up for renewal or what have you, we'll roll it out?
In council, when council rolls it out, it could be a project. If we have a road project, we will replace all the lights with LEDs. Anything that we replace will become LEDs, that's what the suggestion is. The other thing is the developers, we push developers to have LED lights as well.
And in terms of the actual running cost, we know that LEDs are a whole lot cheaper than the existing lights. Have you given consideration to what impact that might have on council ultimately?
Council ultimately pays what NRJX tells us to pay, that's where it comes down to. So NRJX is creating, I think they have already created another tariff for LED lights. So that is cheaper, in other words, a cheaper tariff, in other words. That's the reason that we are looking forward for LED options.
So correct me if I'm wrong, by putting in LED lighting, NRJX will actually reduce the tariff that they're charging us for consumption?
Consumption, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other councillors have any questions for Mr Renawira on this issue? There being none. Can I have a mover for the report's motion councillor Karansky, seconded councillor Raven? All those in favour, raise your hands please. That is carried unanimously, thank you. I hope so too, Mr Mayor, what a great idea. Okay, does item 4.2, renaming of a section of Bush Tucker Road, Birambur, January 2021. I now refer to item 4.2. Before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? There being none, I now refer to the Road Infrastructure Planning Manager, Mr Renawira, you may proceed.
Thank you. Councillors, you may remember there was a report in last September about the same issue. And the report was deferred to address the concern of some residents during the consultation process. Since then, these concerns were further considered and through additional consultation by the deputy mayor. Some of the concerns have been addressed separately, so the reason for the report to come in here now. Only minor changes were made to the road name changes and all those changes are in attachment one. If you look at the attachment one, you will see what sort of changes that we are going to do. The changes referred to, Bush Tucker, part of Bush Tucker Road will be named as Atwood Road, Atwood Avenue, sorry, Atwood Avenue and Geranium Street. It's not there. The Sixth Avenue part will be named as Cedarwood Street. That's the suggestion, the proposal, so I'm happy to get any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr Renawira. I'll open the floor up for discussion councillor Raven.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this was my, is in my electorate. I took the opportunity when I, when I saw the way that consultation was done to go and don off every property that would be impacted and have conversations with residents so I could actually understand their concerns and their priorities and their preferences. Let this be a, a good opportunity for councillors to remember that councillors do the best community consultation. Because the information that I got changed the layout, because when you send a letter that comes from a government, a lot of people don't read it, they ignore it and that, or they just flat out don't understand it. And then you get a situation where the community's needs are not met. Now that the councillor is gone and I've spoken to everybody, the communities, not everyone can be made happy all the time, but the people who can be accommodated have been. Some minor changes and some improvements to the way the road network will work in that area have all come about from this and it's a much better outcome. But this is exactly why councillors should be doing consultation, first and foremost, with the organisation supporting them. And I look forward to Daryl producing a policy that reflects that instead of the current mishmash of Frankenstein policies that we're trying to generate just to send a letter to our residents to find out how they would like their city to be, to be changed and improved. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm happy to move the report when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions councillor Hall?
Excuse my ignorance, but was there any reason why that, that section of Sixth Avenue couldn't have just been left as renamed Bush Tucker Road, considering that it connects to Bush Tucker Road? Why does that little section, that tiny little section at the end of Bush Tucker Road need to become a whole new street?
I can respond if you like, Madam Chair.
Councillor Raven, thank you very much.
Thank you, through the chair. So Bush Tucker Road, it's hard to see in that image, but it actually stops at that intersection. The, there's a bend, like it's a T-section where you have to come on, people on Bush Tucker Road have to give way to traffic that's already on Adderwood and can turn right without having to, to give way at all, because it just flows straight through. Cedarwood is the extension of the street that it plugs into there, so it's not a new street name, it's just an extension of Cedarwood Road, which the one house that lived on there preferred to be part of Cedarwood Road than be part of Adderwood Street. That's the only reason why the name changed.
Okay, thank you.
There is never any good replacement for local knowledge.
There is not.
Councillor Raven, so councillor Raven has moved the motion that's up on the board, do I have a second please? Mr Mayor, all those in favour of the motion, raise your hand. That is carried unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on, we've got item 4.3, road name change to part of Bar Scrub Road. I'll now refer to item 4.3 before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict to declare? There being none, Mr Renawira, you may proceed.
This is another road name change, this is in Bar Scrub, so it's Bar Scrub Road, in other words, part of Bar Scrub Road. This is triggered by, mainly by the local development area plan, LDAP. And the developers were also making inquiries about the need for a change of road name. As for the LDAP, if you look at the section, I think, attachment two, LD, can you bring it up? I don't know, anyway, you will see a blue line, blue, the road with blue showing east-west connector, that's Bar Scrub Road. So as for the LDAP, Bar Scrub Road will fulfil an important collector function and east-west movement function, connecting Beanley Bodeset Road as well as Heinz, Heinz Road. So that's the connector, connection that we want to maintain. So if you name it in a different, you name the whole road section by section, say in one section as Scrub Road, Bar Scrub Road, the other section another name, that's going to be confusing for people, motorways. The last part of connection is unformed currently, as per the LDAP. So we need to make that road as Bar Scrub Road. There is a need for that, to make that whole Bar Scrub Road connecting to Heinz Road. But there is another part at the end which goes to a reserve and it's called Bar Scrub Road. So that need to be changed as well. So we came up with a proposal, the last part that goes into a reserve to be named as Old Bar Scrub Road and the part that, I think unnamed road or unformed road to be named as Bar Scrub Road. So that way motorways will be very, I mean, there is no confusion for motorways, they go in Bar Scrub Road and hit Heinz Road eventually. So to achieve this, we followed the normal process, 11 affected residents were consulted. Only two residents came back with some suggestions and we spoke to the council, local council about those suggestions. And those suggestions we can manage and that's in the report how those suggestions are managed. As we, we don't see any compelling reason not to proceed with this now. The change of road name is proposed as is. So thank you, I think I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr Renawira. I'll now open the floor to councillors for discussion, do any councillors have any questions? Councillor Karansky?
Thank you, I just wanted to make the comment that as a councillor who formerly looked after this area, I always found it quite challenging differentiating between Prangly Road, Bar Scrub Road and so on. So I think that this is a logical progression for, on Bar Scrub Road and Old Bar Scrub Road. But I still consider that perhaps that Prangly Road intersection may just not be clearly defined for people and it creates confusion. I accept that's not part of this report today, but I just wanted to flag that as an area councillor, I struggled differentiating that area once upon a time and I don't know if the new councillor has had that, that challenge yet. But yeah, in terms of what you proposed today, I think that makes logical sense.
Are there any other questions by councillors? There being none, can I have a mover for this report please? Councillor Hall, second please. Councillor Karansky, all those in favour please, raise your hand. That's carried unanimously, thank you very much. That marks the end of the Road Infrastructure Planning Manager report, is there any general business for the manager? There being none, thank you, Mr Renawira, for your time today.
Thank you.
Do you have any information for us or any business for us?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's, we're just calling in the next person. Okay, so we have two gentlemen entering the discussions now for the next two reports and they'll tic-tac on, on the microphones. Moving on to item 5.1, it's a report into Logan Water Capital Works Programme Performance Midyear Review 2020/21. I'll now refer to item 5.1. Mr Goodhue, can you please enter the discussions? But before we open the discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict to declare? There being none, I would now refer to the Water Infrastructure Manager to open public discussion, Mr Goodhue, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just waiting for the presentation and the clicker if I may? That's the official term, the clicker, I think. So thank you, Madam Chairs. Councillor, this is a regular mid-year report presenting the Capital Works Programme delivery performance to the end of December last year and a revised Capital Works Programme and budget, effectively resetting the forecast at the end of the financial year. The programme revisions are predicated on changes driven by a number of internal and external influences during the course of the year since the programme was developed in late 2019. Okay. And as approved as part of the 2021 budget cycle. So these changes typically include inclusion of emergent projects, particularly those to support development growth, deferral of projects, growth-driven projects where development triggers have not occurred as anticipated, project scope changes and associated cost increases or decreases, early or late project commencement and early or late completion of projects and cost savings due to delivery efficiencies and reduced unit rates. So these changes have resulted in a net reduction in capital programme value of some 28.88 million, from 119.1 million down to 91.2 million, which is effectively a reduction of 23%. Importantly, these changes have not impacted on the delivery of infrastructure to support growth or indeed provide levels of service to existing customers. Summary information on the major project variances are contained within the report with the revised programme and budget for adoption in table two. Detailed information on project by project basis is presented as attachment A to the report. So the following presentation highlights the major project changes across the capital programme. So the smart weater, miss, smart water meter initial rollout. So we've got, we've got the, we've got a variety of different devices and communication technologies which are being employed. And we feel is, a little bit more time needs to be done in monitoring and researching of the different technologies before we commit to significant expenditure. So the, this particular project will go out of it in time. So the, it's a reduction in, in the budget forecast for it, 1.4, 1.4 million decrease. York Street, there's York Street building, there's been some delays in the delivery of that building and so that will be underspent for this year quite significantly. I should say at the outset that any impacts of the revised forecast for this financial year will then inform the budget submission for the following financial year capital programme. To slide seven. So the Cedar Grove wastewater treatment plant, there was just some minor finish-ups that occurred. That was, that was practically complete and commissioned in October last year and is fully operational. But there was some small amounts that trickled over into this financial year, didn't affect the overall project value. The Biosolos gasification facility with some delays in procuring some infrastructure due to the fact that most of it is imported, that's slowed down that, that project significantly. And so that'll be, as I said, delayed. Andrew Road wastewater conveyance, infrastructure, again, that's been delayed and hence a reduction in the expenditure for this financial year. Commentary on that. Similarly with Logan Reserve wastewater conveyance, it will be ready in time for, for it to support the development growth it's required, but the budget forecast for this year, sorry, this one's completed and it's now been commissioned. But it was a, a project that we got in front of last financial year, so it's a reduction in the budget amount for this financial year. But there was more money spent in last financial year than we had anticipated. East Street, it's currently under construction, target construction April 21 and it's not going to be terribly different to budget. We have a, with our water supply network renewals, that's on target for completion this financial year's programme. The Beanley Treatment Plant to Logan Home Treatment Plant diversion, which will actually be picked up in the, the next report from my member of the cohort. We, we do have Capital Works in this financial year, but there's been a change in the strategy and so we've delayed the significant investment in that for this financial year and it'll be factored into forward years and the detail to come. The stage eight upgrade of the Logan Ham, Logan Home Treatment Plant, similar story, it's been delayed aligned with the, the transfer strategy. The solar array is currently in delivery and it will be delivered under budget. And the Logan Village Pump Station is in detailed design and its delivery is slightly delayed. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, just pulling my chair back up to the desk and I didn't fall off, so yay for me. I'll open the floor to questions from councillors, just a quick one. Thank you very much for that short, sharp and concise accounting of, of the report, it's, it's nice. Councillor Karansky, first up.
Just a quick one, I note that as you rightly said, the Logan Village pump station's been delayed, when do you think that we might be there?
Through you, Madam Chair, I might actually defer to Mark on that one. Logan Reserve?
Yeah, through the chair, that's actually just gone into construction now. So we've just approved that, whether the guys are on the ground now, I'd have to check, but we're, we're just approved that.
Sorry, you said Logan Village, is this one Logan Village or Logan Reserve?
Sorry, I misheard which, the Logan Village?
The, the Logan Village one, that's just on the north of this city, not north of Logan Village, that's the one that has just gone into construct, into construction now.
Sorry.
Thank you, that makes sense, I've got it now, thank you.
Conveyance, my mistake.
No other questions councillor Karansky, councillor Stemp?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I guess just a couple of questions about the, the smart water meters, because I've had a few residents in my area that have been sort of following this and they're rather interested. I guess some, it's wanting to understand, how long is the proving period anticipated to be before this is further rolled out?
Through, through the chair, I can't give you specific details. The particular project, whilst the capital spend is not being managed through the Water Infrastructure Branch, however, the entire programme is reported simultaneously. So that's being delivered through the Water Business Branch, so Ben Steele is not with us today. Having said that, as I said, the, the technology is not widespread in Australia. Most of the technology does come from the northern hemisphere, particularly Europe, and there's, there's been, there's quite a number of different technologies. So I guess our view is that we really want to assess the veracity of each of the different technologies because as you can imagine, all the vendors will tell you that theirs is the best. So we've very much still in the trial phase, it was quite intentional to ensure that we make the best choice at the end of the day. So there's still, I guess, some effort to be put in to test the veracity of the communication technologies in particular. That seems to be where the biggest sticking point is. We will proceed with the rollout, but once we've, we've got some firm decisions on the technologies.
So we're, so we're using technologies that are used by the councils, are there other councils that have sort of settled on a technology, just for motive of interest?
There are other councils that have bought into the technology. I, again, it's not been my project, I can't give you the detail on them. I do know of one particular council that bought into the technology very early, talking best part of 10 years ago, that have now completely abandoned that technology because it didn't work for them. So we don't want to fall into that trap.
Okay, I might just ask for a bit of an update then at some point from the, from the person managing the project.
Yes, we will be giving periodic updates on, on the major projects, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Hera Meyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At what time was the Logan Reserve wastewater project completed and commissioned?
I might have to defer to Mark on that one.
Through the chair, this is from memory. We, we did complete that one in the middle of last year, it just flowed into, into the start of this year, financial year I'm talking about. So it's, it's going to be around about July or August, but I can get back to you with a date when we actually commissioned that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, the reason that I defer to Mark is the majority of these projects are delivered through our water partnership and as our water partnership manager, he's got, I guess, more in-depth detail of the individual project.
Absolutely, thank you so much. Mr Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, look, I'll just make the statement that it's, when I look at this report and I realise, you know, we come into these meetings and we fight over $10,000 and you see the transfer of allocations in funding, so significant figures that is sort of like come out of it and you think, well, we, we do the best we can, but we have to rely on the expertise of our engineers to obviously produce the bigger part of councils' projects. I know these are constrained in that these are essential items, but when you look at the money and the transfer of money from, you know, the decrease to the increase and I know that's sort of come out okay, but we, we are certainly in your hands in this regard for the amount of money that being spent. And, and there's no complaints, I mean, everything that's been done and Cedar Grove, I mean, has been absolutely sensational. It's won everything and I've been out there and I think it's, you know, a great project. But the amount of money that's being spent in these areas is significant and we need to probably get our head around sometimes, you know, we fight over small amounts of money that we have to sort of certainly glue ourselves into these, these types of allocations.
Thank you.
May I respond as quickly? Madam Chair, I guess at the end of the day, Logan Water is established as a type one commercial entity under legislation and we have a requirement, we're under the prices oversight requirements of the Queensland Competition Authority and as part of that obligation is we must, we must comply with what they call the prudency and efficiency audit. And what that actually means is we must be able to demonstrate that all of our investments are both prudent and efficient. And if they're, if those investments are found to not be prudent and efficient, and that includes delaying projects that might otherwise be premature, the, the penalty for that is council's not able to add that to its regulated asset base, which means they cannot make a revenue on it. So we have an obligation to council to ensure that we absolutely do not spend more than we absolutely need to to provide the service and provide infrastructure for growth and et cetera. So it's something that we have to put So it's something that we have to put a lot of energy into. And, and you do get these ebbs and flows. And particularly in the last financial year, we've never had a change quite this big at a mid-year review. But COVID's had a dramatic effect to, you know, a whole range of things.
Councillor Wilcox.
Thank you. And I just want to say Cedar Grove, what it is, looks sensational. And Round Mountain as well, how they both blend into their areas that they're actually sitting in. But I just want to make a point on page seven of the report, page twenty eight for the councillors. The Andrew Road pump station and wastewater. In the report, it says the station is, the station blends into the surrounding aesthetics of development. If you refer to the photo that's on page forty three. Was there any provision for any plants, shrubs, trees? Because it doesn't blend in. That's exactly as it seems. It's on the main road. It looks like concrete. It doesn't blend into the area.
Oh, through the chair, I'll take your feedback, Councillor Wilcox. I suppose the thing we're highlighting on that project was particularly some of the fencing and the the artificial grass and things that are there, that was a, a change from what we've normally done. And it was an attempt to make them look less industrial. I will take it on that we haven't pleased everyone.
It still looks like a pump station.
Yeah, so we, we have, we do.
It loves some plants.
Yeah, we, okay, I'll see what opportunities there are on that, on that site.
There's no other questions from councillors? Just one quick one. So all of these savings that you have listed there, that doesn't come back into, we can't make great plans and grand plans with any savings. That's back into the water entity for you to reinvest for Logan Residence, is that right?
Essentially, yes. The capital program is funded by a combination of infrastructure revenues and loan borrowing. So this would essentially translate into borrowing less in this period.
Thank you very much. If there's no other questions from councillors, can I have a person move the report? Mr Councillor Power, seconder, Councillor Murphy, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five point two, we have the same people in the room. Referring to five point two, before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? There being none, I now refer to the Water Infrastructure Manager to open public discussion. Mr Goodheale, you can proceed again. Oh, pardon me.
So I'll introduce myself, Mark Vaughan, I'm the Water Partnership Manager and I'll, I'll be going through this report.
No worries. Thanks, Mr Vaughan.
Okay, through the chair, I'll just take you through the main points of this report. Like Tony just shared with you, we've got some significant investment coming up. And a lot of it's to do with this Logan Home to Beanley wastewater strategy. At the moment, we've got, that serve this part of the city, we've got two treatment plants. So we've got the Logan Home treatment plant, which is obviously our largest treatment plant. And we've got the Beanley treatment plant, which is, used to be a Gold Coast treatment plant before the, the boundary reform. And it picks up the catchments around Beanley, Eagleby, Bar Scrub and in that area. Now, we've been doing a lot of work in this study and I suppose this is now coming to an end. And we're here to brief council on the steps that we intend to take forward. I'd like to highlight right at the start, there are some big numbers that we'll be talking about in this report, but they're not new big numbers. They're actually in our capital budgets going forward. So you'll, this, this isn't a request for, for new money. Okay, so Beanley wastewater treatment plant, it is a, like a medium sized treatment plant. It treats about 12 mega litres a day. Of that 12 mega litres a day, seven comes from the Logan catchment. And a five, five mega litres per day is treated on agreement that's just transferred up from Gold Coast. We're looking to continue that arrangement because it's quite beneficial to Logan to do so. And I'll take you through the, the reasons for that now. So Beanley is getting to the stage where it's, it's reaching capacity. Two years ago, in wet weather, we had significant trouble meeting our licence condition. And we, we've been in discussions with our regulator DES about that going forward. So what we have been looking at is options on whether it is a better option for council to get in and renew Beanley and try and bring it up to an acceptable condition to take forward. Or whether it is actually better to, to close down the site and consolidate our options at Logan Home. And, and that's the option that we, we've landed on, but I'll take you through the process of how we got there. So I've spoken about that, that we've struggled with the licence. The other thing about Beanley is that it is getting quite old now. It is an older technology. Some of the fundamentals of the plant are not desirable. Things like the depth of some of the major tanks that you see on the site, they're, they're not deep enough for modern technology. And they actually provide us with, with difficulty going forward. So the, if we, if we say we've been late, one of the things that we would have to face would be we'd have a significant renewal cost. And that renewal cost wouldn't actually give us any extra capacity. That would just be to maintain operations and keep it safe. When we're negotiating with, with Gold Coast, the, the current agreement, we, we receive around about three and a half million dollars a year. And around about one million dollars of that is return on our assets. And the, the fee for, for providing the service through to Gold Coast. So that's, that's the profit element to it. What we've been able to negotiate with those guys is a continuation of this agreement. Where they'll continue to, to pay us to treat their waste and they'll also assist us in repaying their portion of the capital investment that will be required. So those arrangements are, are very likely to continue. We're in the final stages of working through that agreement. They've also briefed, the, the equivalent committee at Gold Coast has been briefed and there's a, there is a appetite to continue. And they, they're going to go to their next committee seeking a delegation to do so. I think the rest of it's self-explanatory in the report. It does have an impact on the gasification project. The gasification project that we're doing at Logan Home was always going to be delivered in, in two stages. What this is essentially doing is by bringing across the flows from Beanley, that's a big enough step change that that will mean that stage two of that project effectively becomes stage one. Because it just needs to be that little bit bigger to, to cater for those flows. And so that's, that's what we're designing to there. Now, through the financial analysis, we, we took four options through. One was what I spoke about, which was the renewing of Beanley and staying with two plants, one at Beanley, one at Logan Home. Options two and three were options where we would centralise at Logan Home, but only for ourselves. So ju- just whatever Logan needed there. And the fourth option was where we would make it bigger and give capacity or, or provide capacity to take Gold Coast through. What that has ended up coming out as, and, and you can see it in the numbers there, that our preferred solution, which is to provide a MBR technology, which is the same technology that you've seen out at Cedar Grove. Our preferred technology, when, when we partner with Gold Coast, is our least cost technology as well too. So in that partnering arrangement is a good long-term benefit for, for council. Few other considerations, you see the photo there of Beanley and how it was pretty significantly impacted by, by the floods. If the floods were just a fraction higher, it could have been catastrophic impact there. But it was significant as it was, but it was, could have been worse. I have highlighted that this is already in our capital budgets. We think this is the, the least risk option for council because it gives the modern technology for the majority of our flows. And also obviously when we talk about to our regulator, providing the best quality effluent that would come through modern technology is again a plus there. So in conclusion, Beanley performs poorly, struggles in wet weather, it's got poor asset condition. We would like to close it. The best option to do that is to, is to go to Logan Home and consolidate our activities there. And in doing so, when partnering Gold Coast, that's the, the least cost option for council and the way that we are intending to go forward. So with that, I would hand back to the chair and us.
Thanks very much, Mr Vaughan. I'll now open the floor for discussion. Mr Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we read the report. So everything you said is, is, we've taken into account. Interesting, the, the photo on page fifty six of the flood, which is significant given, you know, who was it? Was it Albert or Gold Coast that actually put that there? Do you know? Probably Albert, I'd imagine. Yeah, it just, it's just, it just goes to show you such poor planning from a previous council. Typical neglect from that council. Yeah, I support it. I think it makes great sense and it stacks up financially. That's, that's the big one. Stacks up financially, as you say in there, it makes perfect sense.
Madam Chair, if I just can just add one little bit that doesn't get particularly highlighted. By virtue of taking the flows to Logan Home and then applying a better technology, it's a way better environmental outcome. Far less nutrient to waterway.
Thank you very much. Councillor Russell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I just couldn't find anything in the report that made reference to any impact on employment. Was there going to be any impact?
There's not, no, through the chair, there's no reference in the report because there is no impact. There are three guys that, that operate at a Beanley treatment plant. Those guys will come into the, the full treatment operation. I suppose what you can see in the report is while we are ceasing operations at Beanley, we're increasing operations at Logan Home. So there is, you know, employment opportunities there.
Thank you. That's wonderful news.
Jobs are important. Thanks, Councillor Russell. I've got Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, being the local divisional councillor, I'm very ecstatic that this is getting moved. And, and would the area go back to the parks and the wetlands there? And will the buildings be removed and decommissioned? And, and possibly the environmental side be addressed to that particular area?
Yeah, look, our, through the chair, our exact plans for, for that site need to be worked through. And we will be in a future report out to council and saying what that is. One of the things that will remain on the site is we need a pump station to, to pump the flows across from that site. So all of the storage network points to Beanley, so we need to pump it across to Logan Home. So at, at a minimum, there'll be a pump station on that side, a significant pump station on that site. What we actually do with the remainder of the site, we, we need to work through. We haven't got a full visibility about that. We will bring a report back to council on that.
As the current divisional councillor, we are in the phases of working through the community services to do a master plan for this particular area and enhance it as much as we can. Because it's the only wet wetlands that we can control under Logan City Council. And especially with the possibility of the emerging Kumara connector. So we want to make this particular area of land extremely special and protected for our local residents. So I hence say that to you, that the Community Services Manager, Nick McGuire, is currently looking at a master plan for this area. I can't wait. Do we have a timeline on this particular work?
Yes, so the, the treatment plant itself will need to stay active at least until the, the end of twenty twenty two. So that, that will be the, when we'll be able to start transferring flows across to Logan Home. And then post that, then we'll be able to start, start looking at what we do with the rest, remainder of the site. So it's, it's medium term rather than immediate.
Thank you very much.
Through, through you, Madam Chair, these strategies do take three, four, five years sometimes to, to implement. And clearly we need to have additional treatment capacity at, at Logan Home before we can send anything there. And then of course the conveyance infrastructure. But to your question around future use, typically, not that we close treatment plants down every other week, we undergo a future use study. And at that point in time, we actually consult on, into potential options. One of the things that, and before we can actually even start that process, one of the things we need to do is identify what the environmental issues are on site that's likely, that's contaminated. And so we've got to work through all of what our environmental and legal obligations are before we can even consider what our future use might be.
Thanks very much, Councillor Stemp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councillor Murphy actually answered, asked questions about the, what the future use was going to be. So I'm all good. Thank you.
There being no other questions from the councillors. Can I have a mover for the report? Mr Mayor, a seconder, Councillor Murphy, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That is, oh, we've got all but one. Councillor Heremeyer?
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you very much. That marks the end of the Water Infrastructure Manager's report. Is there any general business for the manager or Mr Vaughan? Okay, do you have any business for us? No, okay, there being none. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your time this morning. I appreciate it. I note that due to social distancing restrictions, not all managers or staff could attend today. That being said, does anyone have any general business for the Acting Director of Road and Water Infrastructure? Councillor Karansky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Daryl, I just wondered if you could provide councillors with a bit of an update on how we're progressing with the feasibility study for the Bethany to Logan Village stretch of the rail trail project. If you need to take that on notice, that's fine.
I will need to take that on notice. I'm not across that. I'm sorry. Yep.
Just further to that, councillor Hall and I both had the opportunity to attend a residents meeting which was hosted by the, I may get the title wrong, is it the Friends of the Bethany to Logan Village Rail Trail? Who were out gauging community interest and I recognise that we're only in a feasibility phase at the moment. But it has piqued some concerns with some residents, particularly those living in the Palm Lakes residential community that's traversed by the trail. And councillor Hall and I have given residents an undertaking that in due course, we will provide them with updated information. But I appreciate that nothing may be forthcoming just at this point in time. Thank you.
Are there any other councillors with general business for the director? I do have one. Our most precious resource are our children. And when council works together with the community to achieve things for their safety, it's an important thing to mention. Now, over the Christmas period, we had multiple storms, we had very rainy days. But the Rhodes crew and the council crew from Rhodes actually worked with engineers and construction workforce administrative support to rebuild the Woodridge State School car park, which is almost three quarters done. Half of it will open for the first day of school for twenty twenty one, but the remainder will be open within the fortnight now. I went out to the site and I was most appreciative of the fact that teams didn't stand down when a rainstorm came. They stood aside and then they picked up their tools and continued working because they knew this was a time sensitive project for the start of the school year. So with your indulgence, I'd just like to say a big thank you to Joe Telford, Tony Cliff, Kev Contour, Taylor Jane Stewart, Nico Roberts, Keith Sims, Andrew Lee, David Schneider, Chris Hnew. And also the construction workforce engineering and administrative support teams. As I said, they're our most precious resource and anything that we can do to make sure that they remain safe at the start of the school year and for the whole of the school year, both at Woodridge State School and St Paul's, is really worth mentioning. So thank, can you please pass my thank you along to the team?
We'll certainly do so, Madam Chair. And thank you for the recognition of the team. I'm sure they'll gratefully appreciate it.
That's no worries. Now, do you have any business for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I don't.
Okay, that completes our agenda for today. I declare the City Infrastructure Committee meeting of twenty fifth January twenty twenty one concluded at eleven nineteen AM. The next up is City Lifestyle and that will commence in five minutes with Councillor Karansky as Chair. Thank you very much.